Let's go to the order. This is our work session meeting, Work County Commission. Monday, October the twenty fifth. Let's uh let's do a roll call. Mr. Burf.
Present.
Mr. Pope.
Present.
Mr. Tanner.
Present.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Cheers. If y'all would, I want to ask Mr. Burf if he would, to lead us in prayers.
Ah yes, Father in the name of Jesus, Lord, we thank you for this day, Lord, that you made. We were rejoiced and be glad and we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity, oh God, to take care of the business of this county. We pray, God, you continue the best this city of Waycross, the county of Ware, all the inhabitants, oh God. And we pray, God, you just continue to be with us. It would liberate the business of this county in Jesus' name. Amen.
Make your allegiance.
Make allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have a, we have a guest speaker.
Uh Chris Cardwell was supposed to be here, but he's, he didn't show, not unless he's coming to the call meeting.
Okay.
Uh he asked to be on the, on the agenda.
Yeah, I see he's on the, okay. If, if not, we'll move on to the agenda items. Uh we got a, a bid award for the old Nichols Highway Phase Two. And um Brandon, oh, would you explain that to us, on that? Please, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Sherman. This is all of the portion of old highway we talked about at the last commission meeting, where we were wanting to extend it all the way to the county line. And then we were gonna have to do the widening ourselves and then the resurfacing and everything. So that's why it's a little more per mile than the original bid that we were doing in concert with the DOT, where they were doing the widening and the final striping and the RPMs. And we were only doing the resurfacing on the first part from um one fifty eight to the Bickley Highway. So this is a shorter distance, but we're doing all the work. And the DOT's not assisting us with it, so it's a little bit higher per mile. Um the price came in below our budget estimate, so we felt like it's probably, we're saving money by going ahead and having the contractor out there while he's doing the other work to do this. And because of the time constraints involved with surface treatment, it's weather-related, just like asphalt, um with the cold weather that we got coming up this winter. There's a reason why we wanted to go ahead and try to decide on this and if we are in favor of it, move forward so that they can get started on it and hopefully get it in before the cold weather would put it off until next spring.
Okay, alright.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Brandon.
Yeah, give him that.
Okay, uh appreciate that and uh I guess your foresight is to try to, you know, do it now rather than wait to lay down. Uh so the extension part, how, how far would that be? I, I know we talked about it, but I couldn't remember how many more miles it would be.
If, the original was around six miles and I think this is about four point seven, so it was another four, four and a half miles or so.
So the total miles will be like what, right at ten or eight?
Yes, sir, a little, little over ten.
Ten?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Scott, so what, is this budgeted already for this? Would this become out of T-Splosts?
Comes out of the T-Splosts.
And uh I was asked to look at the T-Splosts account, to look at the projects that we had upcoming from that account. And so threw together spreadsheet and we had already discussed this issue amongst staff. In the past year, we've been keeping an eye on this account because we were aware of the fact that when we presented this um for vote, we had uh twenty-two and a half million dollars worth of projects we submitted on this that was approved. But we were realizing we were only gonna bring in fifteen or sixteen million dollars. So there's sort of a shortfall built into this account so that we would be able to continue receiving funds and give yourself a little bit of a cushion so that you had a great couple of years and the economy and your sales tax revenues are really high, you don't have to cut the revenues off. You can continue to collect those over the entire life that was originally set up for this single county T-Splosts, which was five years, sixty months. So in this account, um spreadsheet we put together, we got our US one allocation of five million dollars. And we're about month forty of sixty months, so that two million nine hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars shown there would be, is pro-rating that over that entire sixty months. Comes up to about eighty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents a month that we're setting aside for that overpass so that when we're done in the sixty months, taking in this single county T-Splosts, we'll have that five million dollars to go towards that uh overpass project on State Street.
Okay, so, but originally this, this wasn't figured into the equation of this other additional four miles or whatever?
It, it, it was part of the uh project list that was put before the voters and approved. It did show it starting at one fifty-eight and going all the way to the county line. We kind of jumped in to try to do this portion from one fifty-eight to Bickley Highway because of the opportunity with the state being there and doing that widening project. And then the idea came up, we'll go ahead and do it all now. What would that cost? And so that's why we um bid it out to try to get some economy of scale. While you've got them here, you, you get more bang for your buck, in other words.
So this won't uh affect any other projects for, I mean, well, we doing this, it would have to, somebody else would have to wait or another project would have to wait?
No, sir. If you look at, look at our projections and, and of course, this is uh, nobody knows, you know, exactly what's gonna happen with, with these revenues and what we anticipate them to be. But based on what we've got, had coming in so far, we just project that out for the remainder of the uh sixty months. And that's what this shows here, where that cutoff line is going to be currently with the projects on hand and what we're projecting in revenues. And then if you said, okay, well, we don't wanna spend that extra nine hundred thousand dollars, where that would carry you forward on the list, you could pick up a couple more of those projects there. It's uh, I said, a shortfall was built into this. It's my full intent to do all these projects eventually. And uh use LMEG funds, regional um T-Splosts funds, use CDBG funds, everything we can, so that we, at the end of the day, we will eventually get all these projects done. Um it's just that it's probably not gonna happen um with the uh single county T-Splosts, just because of twenty-two and a half million dollars of projects put out there knowing we were only gonna bring in fifteen to sixteen million dollars worth of revenues. There's six and a half million dollars that we just can't make up during this timeframe. Uh we, and that's another reason why the Splosts is so important and why we were trying to get the, the Splosts passed to help us have funds, funding available to address this, the shortfall that we had because we were wanting to get as many of these projects done as we can.
Okay. What kind of money is the state throwing in on this project?
Uh I think that was about five hundred thousand dollars for the widening portion for that first phase. The widening, the uh striping, RPMs, I think that that contract value was about five hundred thousand dollars.
I think maybe we mentioned it when we discussed it. I think uh Commissioner Towne alluded to it about how it would be advantageous to us to go and try to do this now, by every, all the players are there.
Yes, sir.
Versus waiting to pick up and then come back.
I, I don't like joints and pavement and stopping something. I know why we have to do that. I know we don't have all the money we need all the time to go and do an entire project. Sometimes you have to stop, you know.
Right.
You, you run out of money eventually, have to draw a line somewhere. But I don't like joints and pavement and it makes sense to go ahead and do this all at once and try to eliminate all of that if we can.
The initial, I was gonna mention initial thought on this list for whatever wasn't gonna get accomplished through the single county T-Splosts is what Brandon mentioned is that we were thinking that hoping that we would have the Splosts that would pick, the new Splosts, pick up what was left and finish them up.
Yeah. There's also the regional Splosts and CDBG and LMEG funding and other sources available. There are some other things we've talked about trying to apply for. There's a infrastructure bank the state of Georgia has out there. We've talked about the possibility of trying to apply for some of those, some of that money.
Okay. Anything else? Are you a motion?
I'm making a motion to accept East Coast asphalt.
We're in the work session, so I gotta wait till, but we'll just add it to the agenda for the call meeting. Sorry about that.
Excuse me, I will. Anything else on it? Okay. Now, if no more on A, we'll go to B, on the Georgia Department of Revenue Order Regarding a Twenty Twenty Tax Digest. And uh. What, are you gonna explain that?
Joyce gonna be able, or Roger, it doesn't matter.
Honestly, I mean this. Good afternoon.
Hey, Bill.
Oh, what we got, gentlemen, is like I said, we've received this letter. We're reviewed every three years by the Department of Revenue. They do what's called a, a sales ratio study on us. There's three measures uh that are used, uh price-related differential, coefficient of dispersion, and the median number. Uh in two thousand seventeen, when we had our review, uh the COD was out of whack, which is measuring some uniformity. When we're doing mass appraisal, of course, we're applying what we see in certain neighbors and areas and so forth, looking at sales that we have. Sometimes when you're looking at, say, older, older homes, say, some of these homes we have in neighborhoods that are seventy-five years old, a hundred years old, some of the application that you're doing inside your schedules, some of those numbers that they're measuring us by, basically those numbers can get out of whack without doing internal um IT work, basically within the CAMA system that you use, which is the mass appraisal system that we use. Um we're audited every year by the Department of Audits and, and we've never had a problem with reaching the number we needed for full collection of your public utilities and your school systems. Uh but this is a different measure and a different audit. Uh they, they cited this in seventeen. We have tried to correct it through different measures um over the last twenty years. Twenty years ago, we had seventy-five neighborhood codes. Uh it was a lot, it, the job was easier to do, we'll just put it that way. We now have five hundred and seventy-five neighborhood codes within Waycross and Ware County. So we have tried to tweak these schedules and numbers, you know, the best that we can to make them fit everything. So uh basically what we're here to do today is we've received this letter on October, it was mailed on October the fifth. Uh I think Roger received his copy on the thirteenth. Uh we received our copy on the fifteenth. Um I think Jennifer may correct me here. I think that uh basically by law, we were kind of doing some investigation and it may have been from the time of the receipt of the letter from them that we had to file the appeal. Uh we've spoke to some of the Department of Revenue people. They're telling us that it's basically like an assessment notice, that it's the date from the mailing. So roughly, we're looking at about ten days. So we got it, if, we didn't receive it for ten days, we got about ten days left on it for us to act and for the board to uh go ahead and file the appeal. If we file the appeal, basically the number that was stated on the letter as far as penalty, the appeal basically is gonna give us two years to correct this deficiency we have. So basically what we're here to do today is just to urge the board to go ahead and let us file this appeal. And the board, we're already uh making moves to go ahead and try to rectify the situation. So at a further date, we'll be able to come back to y'all and be able to tell you something a little bit different uh in what we're looking at, what we're gonna have to do. But basically, it's a, it's a internal overhaul of basically all the schedules and, and I'm not gonna get too deep in it. But when you're doing what we're doing, they'll have to go in and, 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 or we will, all our base dollars will have to be adjusted, all our cost multipliers will have to be changed. Appreciation schedules would have to be updated, uh quality multiplier has changed and neighborhood multiplier has changed. And all this is just a bunch of technical stuff inside these schedules. Um so really, like I said, today, uh we're just here today to try to urge the board to go ahead and let us file this appeal and get it filed timely and uh then we'll start working on what we need to do.
Okay. Did they hit very many counties this year?
Um actually, five counties. Uh and this is kind of, we didn't, weren't the best or the luckiest at the way our review comes, because it falls every three years. So we failed, our review did the, the time before as the market was starting to explode. So some counties, of course, the reviews, there's about a hundred and fifty-nine counties, so they're trying to review every three years, a hundred and fifty-nine, so fifty counties a year. So next year, you're probably gonna be seeing a lot more of this. We just kind of fell into a bad timeframe for it to kind of all take, take, you know, root. As far as, and you know, it's like the Department of Audits uh this year, seventy-nine out of the hundred, out of a hundred and fifty-nine counties did not pass the Department of Audit's audit that we had this year. The numbers, just because of the skyrocket, skyrocketing uh sales prices of real estate, uh half of them are not collecting all their money for uh public utility and school system. So we've been, we're, we're good there. Um of course, steadily trying to chase these numbers as we see what's going on in the market to make sure we're putting fair market value on the property. So um that, that, they only audit, when the audit department does their thing, they're only measuring one thing and that's your median. So it's a completely different audit with the Department of Revenue.
Is this the first, uh, is this the first time we ever been facing this right here in the county or?
Oh, I've been here twenty-plus years and to the best of my knowledge, we've never uh, we, we've, of course, like anybody else, we've had deficiencies and when they were corrected. This is just like I said, a matter of twenty years' worth of trying to doctor uh, just like a machine, running a machine. You keep patching, you keep patching, you keep, keep patching. Eventually, you have to overhaul it. So the schedules will have to be overhauled. So.
What is your drop dead date as for the appeal?
Oh, I think it's November the fifth uh was the last day that we had. So uh I think in conversation that we had, we'd like to try to get uh y'all's blessing on that today, uh get it overnighted, certified mail, if it has to be hand-delivered to Atlanta uh in a timely manner. We'll, we'll get it there where we are not having to deal with any of that that you've seen in the letter that, that you got.
The reason I was asking, the mail right now is kind of funny. We wanna make sure we get it there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We're, we're gonna get it there regardless. You know, if I have to drive it to Atlanta, we're gonna, we're gonna get it there. So I mean, that's, that's not gonna, we're gonna send it every way known to man to make sure that it's there.
This appeal gonna last for two years.
Twenty twenty-three. We'll have until they do their review in twenty twenty-three to have it.
You think you can be up by then? I'm sure you can.
We're, like I said, we're gonna, there'll be, we'll, we'll be coming back to y'all probably eventually uh letting you know where we are. But it's like anything else, you're not gonna fix something that's a bad problem. You can't fix a road grader if it's tore up without it costing some money. So we're just gonna see what's gonna be our best avenue. Uh but we think it's gonna be a lot, a lot better to fix the problem and it be a lot less expensive than not appealing.
Right. Cause even if you didn't appeal, you still have to pay.
You're gonna pay them and then you're gonna pay them in two more years of that deficiency, the same amount of money. So.
Okay.
Anything else?
Anything else? That's all. Thank you, Bill.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Add something real quick, just that, just to see back to what you were saying is, one thing that is also tied with this five dollar, the, the penalty thing here is if we don't get this in on time and then we have to pay it as long as it takes, all the grants, any grant that Ware County has with the state will be on hold. Uh FLPA reimbursement will be on hold. They will keep all that until it's actually received. So I mean, honestly, it's the best bet to go ahead and get this appeal sent up and get them, hopefully we can get them to push it off where we don't have to pay that, uh that penalty and be able to cover it in there and it will still release all that funds.
Okay.
So, right, so this appeal, that, that's no guarantee that they will.
Well, there's, there's nothing in life guaranteed.
Well, I understand, that's what I'm saying.
But I'm, I'm, but I'm saying is, is that regardless, we have to, we gotta do something, but they will hold whatever grants, whatever, anything that Ware County is entitled to, they will hold it until this is taken care of. And it doesn't have anything that, it can be something having to do with your roads. It can be the FLPA reimbursement, just whatever, they hold, they withhold all of that. So.
Okay, thank you, Roger. Anything else on it? If not, the commissioners got any items?
Where do we uh add on the Emerson Park paving that we just got the LMEG for?
Uh the CDBG, the uh, the CDBG, we'll, we're going through the, the process now, filing all the paperwork that needs to be filed. Uh those funds probably won't be released until late November, meaning that typically you can't start the project on anything designed or anything to that nature until they send you the letter and say that you can start. There is a, and I've, I've sent some information out to you all about the uh, the annual local officials, elected officials thing over in uh Adel tomorrow night. Uh and the Commissioner of DCA is supposed to be there uh to hand out the, the little notices for the CDBGs through the regional commission. And I think there's eight, I think, maybe eight or nine that, that will be um presented tomorrow night in Adel.
Do we have anything back on the equipment that we sold?
Uh don't think so. Have we heard anything on the equipment, the grader?
Yeah.
I'm watching them right now. We got ten minutes left on them.
Oh, okay.
Or we, where we thought we were, it might be?
One of them's about fifteen thousand dollars off, the other one's way off, so that's a miracle.
Okay.
One of them's jumped about uh eighty thousand dollars over that hour.
How many more minutes we got left on it?
Uh ten minutes on one and about uh twenty something on the other.
Okay.
But we had no problem taking them down and refusing and rerunning it again. We'll see if we can.
Okay.
We have a set limit on it.
You got a set limit, so?
We had a reserve.
Okay. They're not at the reserve yet, are they?
No.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. County manager, you have anything?
Um yes, sir. The uh, we sent the, the demand letter to Satilla Water on the Smith Road relocation, uh waterline relocation, excuse me. And uh they have offered to, to uh make the uh adjustments for any conflicts that we may have not to move it. But um I was gonna ask, hey, Brandon, on the, the Smith Road, the water relocation, waterline relocation, uh they only mentioned about uh doing the conflicts, right? Okay. But it's not moving the waterline and.
Just the conflict.
Just conflict. So I didn't know what the uh, the commission might wanna do at this point, um offer to pay for the materials, which hasn't been presented yet. I didn't know from the commission's standpoint what, how y'all felt about it.
Can you explain what's on one side of conflicts, what, what?
Yeah, I'll get Brandon to, hey, Brandon, can you mention what they were, which ones they would be for the conflict?
Anytime crossstrains or anything going in the way, they'll move the water.
Either up or down or off to the side.
They'll move the fiders back to the proper line, stuff like that.
Do you know how many conflicts there would be or without?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking there was uh three or four crossstrains that were showing the plans, but I can go back and look.
What, what we wanted the water line to be all right?
Yeah, that didn't address the age of. Yeah, that didn't address the age of the main being under the pavement or anything like that. That just allows that, those storm grain cross trains to be put in.
So would that be what we really wanted to try to accomplish or would that just be a band-aid?
Well, that would be just enable us to construct the project as designed, but it wouldn't do, have any kind of protection against, um, main breaks, leaks, services, cuts in the pavement for future.
They say this waterline is in good shape and they, they recommend leave it there. You know, we, we got a lot, I know we have a lot under highways and all over the county. But we'd like to see it moved, but, you know, except that it don't have to be. But we will have to set fighters back and stuff like that and everything that's to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. Do you know when that job's gonna be awarded or, or the, uh?
It was, it was, the bid was awarded, I think, last meeting, I believe.
A notice received, I thought.
Uh, don't know this, that one's, Brandon, has a notice received been sent?
Uh, those are, I think, we're kinda looking to find out what we're gonna do about this water main and what our approach is gonna be before we. I think Littleville was wanting to wrap a few things up as well. I don't think there's a huge area to get started out there without giving us a.
Is there a pre-construction?
I don't think we've set that up yet.
Okay. What about the cactus road, what were on there?
Cactus.
I think it's been awarded, ain't it?
It's been awarded.
The condemnation, I mean, the.
Have they had a notice proceeding, I mean, I mean?
Yes, sir. We, uh, I think this, uh, asked for the eight or the eighteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, yeah.
Time start on that. We got a notice, um, this morning that they're having some supply chain problems with concrete pipe that the, uh, the wire used to reinforce concrete pipe is being assured on that. And they're being, uh, giving some additional lead times on the concrete pipe. And we, we buy concrete pipe a lot. Uh, this is something that we haven't been, had, had to face so far. So this is a new, uh, issue that's come up with deconstruction with concrete pipe availability. So we'll see how that, how bad that affects them. I think they asked for about three more weeks of lead time with delivery of concrete pipe. Gaskets, instead of having a problem getting the materials to make the gaskets for concrete pipe, it's just everything you can think of. Uh, it's been being affected by the log jams and orbs and getting stuff in here.
Everybody's a big about it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Brandon.
You're welcome.
Any more? Anything else?
Um, also too, on the CSX drainage project, we're waiting on having a meeting with CSX and their engineers, uh, city of Waycross and Ware County. So once we know more from that, we'll let you all know.
Okay.
We did also, we did get the, the no rise certificate. Excuse me, it has been issued, uh, but the city of Waycross being that the, the, uh, the rice yard is in the jurisdiction of Waycross, they're wanting to get things cleaned up there. So they're, they've asked for a meeting with them.
So that'll be out of our hands, the city will be.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else? I hear a motion, adjourn. Make a motion.
Second.
I have a first, motion and a second to adjourn all in favor. Make the adjourn. Sir.